Good evening, councillors. Before proceeding with tonight's meeting, I need to ask for your confirmation of your agreement that councillor David Ellis be appointed as the chairman of this Eastern Area Planning Committee for the remainder of the council year 2016/17.
Agreed.
Thank you. May I invite councillor Ellis to take his place on the dais?
Thank you for your confidence. Now we move to the second item on the agenda tonight, the appointment of a vice-chairman. May I ask for your agreement that councillor Maurice Byham be appointed as the vice-chairman of this Eastern Area Planning Committee for the remainder of the council year 2016/17?
Agreed.
Thank you. May I invite councillor Maurice Byham to take his place on the dais? So, good evening, councillors. Before we commence the meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations, which you all know as well as I do. Can you also ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent and speak directly into the microphone? We have no members of the public, so I won't bother to address them. Item three, the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 5th of October. Gary? Sorry, no, it's me, isn't it? Have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting?
Thank you.
Apologies for absence. This is you, Gary.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, we've had apologies for absence from councillor Mary Forziski.
Thank you. Declarations of interest?
None received prior to the meeting, chairman.
Do members have any other non-procurnary or disclosable procurnary interests? Yes, councillor Seaborn.
I'm not sure whether this is necessary to declare or not, but in relation to item B1, which involves a petrol station which is marketing petrol from BP, I'm a BP pensioner.
Thank you. Noted. Questions from members of the public, Gary?
None received, chairman.
Very good. Any relevant updates to government guidance? Peter, I understand we do have some.
Yes, thank you, chairman. Good evening, members. I have one update for you with regard to the Planning and Housing Act 2016. The Housing and Planning Act, apologies, 2016, which I've referred to in previous updates, sets out various requirements upon the council and some of which came into force on the 1st of October this year. A lot of the requirements relate to policy matters relating to referendum, adoption of neighbourhood plans and such like, which don't necessarily impact on your decision-making function but are also important. However, there's one change that is of importance regarding the committee's decision-making. So, as I said, as of the 1st of October, there's a requirement on a local planning authority when considering proposed development which is in an area for which a made neighbourhood plan is in force, that any report or recommendation must set out how the plan was taken into account in making the recommendation. At present, you'll be aware that we don't have any made or adopted neighbourhood plans. However, members will be aware that some are now progressing and therefore, once adopted, all reports will have regard to the Housing and Planning Act requirement and each report that will be put forward to the committee will identify how the plan has been taken into account. As they come through and as neighbourhood plans emerge, we will again highlight this need and identify where that duty or requirement has been carried out in the assessment of the report. It's not something before you tonight, but it's an important update for members to take account of. Hope that's useful, chairman, and I'm happy to take any specific questions on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Do any of the members have questions for Peter on that one? Okay, so we move on to item eight, the Quarterly Planning Enforcement Report. Beth, can you introduce the report to the committee, please?
Thank you, chairman. This report provides members with a report on progress of the enforcement team for the quarter July to September. The site-specific update remains polling for place. I think that is it for the eastern area. So if then I take you to page 10, table one, you'll note that our cases on hand continues to fall and that on page 11, on table three, we actually hit 100% against our performance indicator during that quarter, which was brilliant news. On page 13, the appeal decision for land west of Knoll Lane is detailed. The appeal was allowed, but importantly, the enforcement notice was upheld, so whilst planning permission now exists for the site, the council still retains an element of control until the planning application scheme is implemented. And that concludes my very brief update. Thank you, chairman. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Beth. Members, any comments? Councillor Goodrich?
Only to congratulate the team. A, it's good to see, despite having 104 cases received, that the cases in hand has gone down and, as Beth has said, performance indicators brilliant and I endorse her favourable remarks about her department. Well done.
Very good. Thank you. Councillor Band, did you have your hand up?
I did. I was going to say exactly the same as councillor Goodrich, so again, well done, team.
Indeed, I'll endorse that. Thank you very much. So we move on to item nine, site visits. In the event of site visits or inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday, the 5th of December, at a time to be agreed. And moving on to the applications, item B1, reference WA 2016, 1,687 Allfold Filling Station, Horsham Road, Allfold, GU68JE. Jenny, would you like to introduce this application to the committee, please?
Thank you, chair. This is just the location plan for the filling station, the aerial photograph, just to give you an idea of how rural the area is and how far away the residential properties are. The buildings next door are a garden centre. Just some photographs to show you existing signage with the spa signed above the door at the moment. The main adverts are to the front of the building and the side of the building, to the canopy and the car wash. The signage, just so that you can see what's going to be on each wall, you have the BP lozenge, you have the Marks and Spencer's Simply Food sign, the disabled sign is to make sure people know that that's the disabled parking space, the Wildbean Cafe sign and then another Marks and Spencer's sign to the side. And the car wash, a new sign there, new signage round the canopy, which is basically pretty similar to what you already have and you'll have seen from the photographs, and a slightly higher freestanding totem. This is just showing you the signage as a whole. And then just comparison, the ones that you've got at the top are the signage that's already there and then at the bottom you have the new signage, so you can see the spa there and then the Marks and Spencer's one will be more centrally located. And again, just to show the changes to signage, the main one being to the side elevation, where you have a block of three to be replaced by one. Just to go through some of the determining issues, Allfold Service Stations in the countryside, it's a long-established business on the site, it's open 24 hours and illuminated signage is already on the site. This proposal obviously is for display of adverts as shown, principally as a result of the change of the shop on-site from a spa to a Marks and Spencer's. So the proposed adverts are just for the corporate M&amp;S signage, Wildbean Cafe and BP signage. The proposed signs on the shop building and the freestanding totem sign are internally illuminated, it's a combination of strip lighting and internally illuminated signage on the canopy. The internally illuminated signage is just the round lozenge signs that you saw and a non-illuminated sign on the car wash. The proposed level of lighting is quite low and that illumination level is controlled by condition seven. Given this is a long-established petrol filling station and there's already signage on-site, including illuminated signage, the proposal is considered to be acceptable and would not detract from the rural character of the area. Approval is recommended accordingly.
Thank you, Jenny. Members, I open it up to you. Councillor Dinas?
Thank you. This sits within my ward, I should be the first to speak. Could I just turn to page 21? It says, 'County Highway Authority and Town Parish Council, no comments received to be reported orally', and I just wondered what those comments were.
I'm afraid I haven't received comments from them at all.
Thank you for that. It's a well-established petrol station, it's the sort of thing that if it wasn't there, you'd drive through Allfold and wouldn't know you have, so I think we're quite proud of having a petrol station. It is only slightly increased to what originally was there and hopefully better facilities for the community, so I haven't got any objection as a ward member. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so we move to the recommendation. The recommendation is that, subject to conditions 1 to 8 as set out in the report, advertisement consent be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's unanimous.
Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed. The next item is item B2, WA 2016, 1,827 Bullymore House, Church Lane, Cranley, GU68AR. Rebecca, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, chairman. The site is located on the eastern side of Church Lane and comprises a two-storey building which benefits from extensions to the rear. The building is a building of local merit and the site falls within the Cranley Conservation Area. The law for use of the building is as office space, however, the site is currently vacant. St Nicholas Church is located to the north-west of the site and Church Lane leads to residential properties and Cranley Infant School to the north. There is a residential property known as Bellwethers to the east and Cranley Arts Centre is located to the south. St Nicholas Church is Grade II Star listed and Bellwethers, the neighbouring property to the east, is Grade II listed. The front elevation of the application building can be seen in the top-right photograph with the rear of the building in the bottom-right photograph. The side western elevation runs adjacent to Church Lane and the neighbouring property Bellwethers can be seen in the bottom-left photograph, which is the Grade II listed building to the east of the site. Permission is sought for the conversion of the existing building from office space into five residential units. As part of the proposal, the existing western boundary wall would be lowered by two brick courses and an opening would be created to provide a single parking space to the rear. Communal amenity space would be to the rear of the site and that would serve the proposed residential units. The proposed residential units are numbered on the slide. At ground floor level, there would be four one-bed residential units and at first floor level, there would be one three-bed residential unit. The ground floor units would be accessed via a side entrance and the first floor unit would be accessed via the existing front entrance. The proposal would also include alterations to fenestration, there would be no change to the front elevation of the building and in the western side elevation, the existing roof lights would be replaced with conservation-style roof lights. In the eastern side elevation, there would be a replacement roof light, doors and windows. To the rear of the property, two windows would replace an existing window and a window would replace an existing door. The existing roof tiles and window frames of the application building would be replaced to match that of the existing. The current application is a resubmission of an application which was originally submitted to the council in May. This application was withdrawn in September. The difference between the applications is that the previous scheme proposed occupation of the four ground floor units by elderly persons. The current scheme does not include the provision of elderly persons' dwellings. The principle of the conversion of the building from office to residential and the loss of employment use has been established by the granting of a prior approval in August 2014. Whilst this prior approval has not been implemented, officers consider it to represent a realistic fallback position and it would be unreasonable to object on grounds of loss of the commercial unit on this basis. It is considered that the proposed external alterations are minor in nature and would not result in any material visual harm or harm to the character and appearance of the building. The council's heritage and design officer is satisfied that, subject to recommended conditions, the proposal would not result in any harm to the significance of the designated and non-designated heritage assets. The proposed units comply with the technical space standards and the provision of communal amenity space is considered to be acceptable. Given the existing site arrangement in relation to neighbouring buildings, it is considered that there would be no material harm to residential amenity and no archaeological concerns are raised. Having regard to the existing lawful office use likely generating a higher requirement for parking spaces, officers consider that the provision of one parking space in this instance would be an improvement as the site does not currently benefit from any parking. Given the sustainable location of the site, it is considered that it would be unreasonable to refuse the application on parking provision in this particular instance. The county highway authority has assessed the proposal and raised no objection. The matters of principle and technical opinion are therefore the principle of development, planning history, loss of employment use, highways, standard of accommodation and archaeology. Matters of judgment of the design and visual amenity, impact on residential amenity, impact on the building of local merit, adjacent listed buildings and conservation area, parking provision and the provision of amenity space. If I could briefly draw members' attention to the update sheets. The agenda report was drafted prior to the expiry date for comments to be made on the application. However, I can confirm that no further letters of representation have been received. The officer recommendation therefore remains unchanged and is that permission should be granted, subject to conditions and informatives as set out in the agenda report. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Rebecca. Members, comments and questions, please. Councillor Stuart Stenit?
Thank you, chairman. In my orders, Mr Dinas said I'm going to speak first, if that's all right with you. It's a welcome sight to see some small, either rented or for sale, whatever they're going to be, for young people or people who want to downsize. I think it's good, the immediate, it's within walking distance of the town and I say to the officers, 'Well done'. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to... Oh, look, all the hands going up. Patricia.
Thank you. I'm really sorry to do this, but actually I'm going to slightly disagree with my colleague here from Cranley. It's not in my ward, but I do have some concerns and I have to be honest, that I rather feel that I've actually misread the information I've had from the officer on a number of occasions because I have concerns about the parking, the lack of parking, and I would say that Church Lane is an extremely narrow lane without the benefit of pavements or any passing bays. There's a lot of traffic going up and down the lane to get children to the school and I see this as potentially a difficult and quite dangerous area. But I also am concerned about the close proximity to the Cranley Arts Centre. I don't think Cranley or the Cranley Arts Centre are given to riotous performances, but nevertheless, I'm sorry to say that that aerial photograph does not, to my mind, fully indicate how condensed and how close all of this area is, so that I do feel that this is too close to the Cranley Arts Centre and that there will probably be complaints from people who move in, knowing that the Cranley Arts Centre is there, and then complain about noise and perhaps traffic late at night. I think that the suggestions, and this is where perhaps I'm a bit concerned, the free parking suggested for the U Hurst Road, which I'm sure I read somewhere, is, to my mind, not available. It's not available day or night and it's a difficult area. And I think that public parking in Village Way, which is a Waverley Borough Council car park, is not really designed for long-term parking, it's really designed more for shoppers and so I don't think that the suggestion of these as alternative parking for residents in these properties is acceptable. And so unless I head to the contrary, I'm afraid I can't agree to this. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the note you were looking for is on page 41, 'Visitor parking could be accommodated at the free park and adjacent to the bridal shop'. Is that... Yes. Okay. Councillor Gray, I think you wanted to speak.
Thank you, chairman. I mean, I was going to also raise the question of parking and perhaps the officer could point out where parking is on that, not knowing that area. But I mean, there's space for one vehicle there, what about others? I would emphasise the support, my colleague's comment about the road. There does appear to be, it's a very narrow road and there does appear to be a lot of traffic up there. I know the highways have raised no objections, but I think there could be issues for people moving in there. But perhaps you could come back and show me where the car parking is.
Officers, would you like to comment?
Sorry, thank you, chairman. Thank you, councillor Gray. In terms of parking on-site, was that the specific question you're asking about or beyond the wider area? So, on-site, so this is Church Lane in here and so this is where they're proposing the on-site parking provision. I'll just move down to the aerial view because we haven't got a wider location plan. Give me one minute. And this is the access where Church Lane comes down to the main high street. The public parking is further to the south, it's not on this screen, that's down by effectively where the leisure centre is, if you know where that point is along there. But obviously, in the immediate area, there is the Arts Centre which has got its own separate parking and the public parking is beyond the extent of that plan, unfortunately. Apologies, that's not on there. In terms of the parking provision, we've obviously got to always be aware of what the existing lawful use is as an office space or potential as an office space. Currently, it has no parking provision in place, so, and it has a similar, if not a higher requirement for office space than residential use on-site. So we do have to take account of what currently exists there and we would be getting, I appreciate it's only one parking space and I completely agree with the comments that have been made, but because it's a betterment on what's there, we've got to look at the lawful use, what is the additional harm resulting? Just to make a point on the pedestrian access, obviously via Church Lane, that is sort of current access there, but if I just move back to the block plan, there's, obviously parking on-site and the main access into the first four flats is in the front of here and then there's a footpath down the side of the property, so you wouldn't necessarily have to go out that way and walk along the side of Church Lane, which I appreciate is narrow. So just overall, completely understood, if we were looking at a fresh site which didn't have a previous form of development on, we'd be taking a different view, but we do need to take account of the fallback position and the lawful fallback position to potential residential uses in the prior approval as well. So that's where the balance has come from. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Councillor Jeanette Stenit?
Sorry.
Sorry, councillor Gray, did you wish to come back?
Yes, if I could, just to clarify one point, the officer has said that the lawful use, but if it's an office building there, then people are parking during the day, as councillor Ellis said. Effectively, this is residential and we're talking about 24-hour parking in there. I would have thought that was different, but thank you for letting me come back.
Councillor Jeanette Stenit?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, it is my ward as well. I have looked at this today. There were several cars parked in the car park round the back of the Arts Centre. Obviously, people are going, I believe there's a card sale in there at the moment, so people are walking in and out of the Arts Centre off the high street. Some people will be parking around the back, but it's mainly for the staff. The car park is not for Bullymore House. To get into Bullymore House by car would be not difficult, but it would not be easy and if you owned a car, and I guess that's why the applicant has changed its application from elderly to ordinary people, single people, if you owned a car, you'd have to park it across the road in the main car park because the car park that the applicant has suggested, excuse me, is, I believe, by Dobbs Flower Shop and the Funeral Parlor. That is the only parking area in that vicinity that I can think of. So I'm assuming that anybody, a single person moving into the one-bed flats would either have to park their vehicle in the car park or they would not have to own a vehicle at all and use the very good bus service which stops right outside the Arts Centre. Cranley itself, of course, is very capable of looking after most people's needs, two big supermarkets and an assortment of other shops and there is obviously, as far as Bullymore House goes, not a great deal of difference going to be made to the exterior of the property. It's not going to look a lot different to what it looks like now. In fact, it probably may even improve the property because it's well needing a good tidy-up. It's a nice-looking property, it's in the Cranley vernacular. I am not the only person who's grown up knowing it was there, expecting it to be there all my life. I would hate to see it pulled down and something else put up in its place and I personally think these flats would be a very good idea, keep the property going for a little bit longer. Thank you, Mr Chairman. I approve, sorry, of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dinas?
Thank you, Chair. I actually agree with a number of the speakers in different parts. I applaud having a number of one-bedroom places, I've always mentioned it in previous planning applications, that we need to encourage this, so that's the positive that I really approve. But like councillor Ellis, I really am concerned about the parking. I mean, I do know the area quite well and I know how narrow that road is as you go along Church Lane. I mean, you just about can get a car, but you certainly couldn't get a lorry, van or two cars at any one time. And, you know, if you're buying a one-bedroom place, the chances are that you're going to have a car and you're going to be driving to work and that massively concerns me, the impact it's going to be on the area. There is the church, so you've got people using the church, you've got the people going to school, people using the craft centre, Arts Centre, and when you go out onto the high street, it's dead opposite a public house and probably within 30 foot from a roundabout, so I don't think it's the best of locations. But at the moment, depending on what my colleagues say, I am very concerned about the parking and what's going to happen to that area. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Firstly, I agree with previous speakers so far as the appearance of the building is concerned. I think the alterations are absolutely fine. Then one comes to the change of use from office to residential. Now, that's already in effect happened with the application in 2014 and so the principle of it being residential rather than business seems to be something which is totally acceptable. And it then comes down to, is it worse to have what is being proposed today as distinct from a five-bedroom residence where there is already a principle of approval granted in 2014? I'm not sure whether the, that application in 2014 included any parking or whether it included a space or no spaces. I would like to know that, but I would have thought that a five-bedroom property is likely to have more than one car, it would have two, and more likely to be an affluent person living there, therefore with cars, than one-bedroom apartments in effect. There is the provision for a car for a three-bedroom property, which is fine. So it comes down to the parking and it seems to me that if you're going to encourage for there to be one-bedroom apartments for single people, that if they know that there is no parking provision and you've therefore got to finance in the fact that you've got to buy a season ticket in the public car park, then that's something that would have to be taken into account. And I agree that, you know, they should not be parking anywhere near this site because, because the vicinity of the Arts Centre, totally wrong of course to use the Arts Centre car park, that, that should not happen. But, you know, most people use their cars either to go to work or to go shopping and bring the shopping back. Well, it seems to me that anybody in their right mind in Cranley, living there, is going to do all their shopping and everything else by foot. And having removed the suggestion it be for the elderly, then one assumes the inhabitants are going to be fit enough to be able to walk to the doctor's surgery, which is across the road, shopping, which is easy distance, and in fact, all the facilities are easy walking distance. And therefore, one would think that a single person in their right mind would not consider it necessary to have a car, but if they have a car, then they should put it in the public car park and factor that in because it's going to be no secret, when these properties are marketed, that there is no parking provision because of the fact there is public car parking in very easy walking distance. And if the people can get to church by parking in a car park, then they can occupy these flats by walking and going and parking their car in a car park.
Thank you. councillor Band and then councillor Val Henry.
Thank you, chairman. Well, what I was going to say is very much what councillor Goodrich has just said. I mean, I, I think the fact that this is not accommodation, not accommodation for elderly means realistically that if people want to acquire, purchase or rent these properties, they're going to have to take into account that they're going to have to purchase a season ticket. I seem to remember also this discussion on parking has taken place before in relation to this particular application, so I think we've been there before and come to much the same sort of conclusion. So I, I think that the fact there are going to be one-bedrooms in effect, start of provision, home provisions are, are to be encouraged and I support the application.
Thank you. councillor Henry.
Thank you, chairman. This regeneration of a good building, it is a good-looking building and the, the idea of the modest flats, one-bedroom flats, would to, to my mind, seem like a very good idea for, for people wanting to live in Cranley, which has wonderful facilities. However, I, I too, I'm a bit worried with regard to things like deliveries and that there will be deliveries and workmen that come to, to, to the, the residents there and I, I am a bit worried with regard to that. As my colleagues have pointed out, Church Lane is very thin, very slim and it's, it's quite difficult to get two, two cars side by side. So if you were to have your, your, your deliveries delivered to the home, I, I think that would be quite difficult. However, anyone buying a one-bedroom flat would be aware of the, the, the situation in, in the village. They, they would be aware that they're living next door to a church, so they would expect to have bells ringing. They will be aware that it is a, it's a Cranley Arts Centre, so there will be things going off there during the day and in the evenings. And I'm, I'm sure people that were buying these modest apartments will be aware that they, they too can park in the public car parks and have a bonimento to, to enable them to do that. I think it's good use of, of the, the building. As I say, it, it is a good building and I would like to see it come back into useful use and I'm sure there is a market for, for one-bedroom apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Officers. Peter, you're looking round at me, would you like to comment?
Thank you, chairman. I won't add any more. There's just one specific question about the prior approval and that didn't include any of its own parking provision. There was a later planning permission which was referred to as well, which actually provided that, so the prior approval doesn't have it and we couldn't insist upon it being delivered under that. Hopefully that's helpful. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Peter. councillor Byam.
Yes, a couple of comments. I've listened to all of the, the various points very well. Couple of things that, looking at the drawing that we have on the screen at the moment, it, it actually looks as if it could take two cars. Clearly, they are only proposing one vehicle. What we haven't talked about is the possibility of any, any form of parking space for motorcycles or scooters or whatever, which would obviously fit into a much smaller space and be much more easily used. And if it's young people renting these properties, then, you know, the motorcycle may be the, the choice. The other question that I have, which local members might be able to help me on, I mean, I've driven there and there is a community centre of some sort much further back and which I've been to, one or two meetings there and that's right at the very top of the screen. I can't remember what controls there were over that, that parking area. It's obviously an area where most people wouldn't want to park if they were visiting other things, but these people may well find that as a, a refuge, but I may be totally wrong in that it is, it is controlled in some way. I know it's not a Waverley car park, but is it, if it is controlled, who's it controlled by?
Thank you. Could I also ask a question? On page forty-two, there's a note, the third paragraph down, there is no right-of-way to Church Lane and then goes on to say that pedestrians couldn't use it. Well, how's the car going to get to that car parking space if, if the property's got no right-of-way down Church Lane?
Yeah, I think I heard in the background, but it's no public right-of-way, but obviously people that would be residing on-site would have an access to it, so you and I wouldn't just be able to make our way down there, if that's helpful.
So the public can't walk down Church Lane? Odd.
There's not a public right-of-way. If you're accessing the premises behind there, you would have a right of access across there, but it's not a formal public right-of-way. Okay, chairman.
Odd. Right, I think councillor Jeanette Stenit would like to come back and then councillor Stuart Stenit would like to come back.
Thank you, mister chairman. Thank you, mister chairman. That's a first, getting before my husband. Right, first of all, I used to go to school at Gleeblance and to walk through to the village, we would use Church Lane. It was a quick, quick way through to the health centre or into other parts of Cranley we may need to access. So it's always been used, at least for the last fifty-odd years, as a pedestrian area. I mainly wanted to just ask you, on page thirty-two, we have a, a map which shows more or less exactly as the aerial photograph is. Cars do, as Maurice Byam said, go up to the extra car park at the top. Our children used to go to play school up there, so there, there is a, there is a community centre, you're quite right, and there is a little parking up there. But mainly, cars will only go up as far as Bullymore House and they turn in front of Bullymore House. The traffic generally is either going to the church or to the Arts Centre, except perhaps at certain times of the day if they are going up to the community area, which isn't, as far as I know, as popular as the Arts Centre. Looking at the map, it seems to give the impression that the entrance to the ground-floor flats will be, will be on the side on Church Lane, whereas I think, if I remember rightly, it will be in front of Bullymore's House, where that little roundabout is, in front of the house and to the side. And only the three-bedroom property, property five, will access from the very front of the house. Nobody accesses down the, the Church Lane side. You go up Church Lane, just past the church entrance and into the, into the Arts Centre, cars don't usually go much further up. General traffic is only to the Arts Centre or to the church. Just like to make that point, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Mister Stent.
Nothing more to say. I won't be saying anything to her, I want to get home either. I'd just like to make one point. The access for deliveries, if you go to Asda, watch out for their dirty bins, but there you go, is up the side. You don't have to access the flats off Church Lane. You go up the side, if you can put the drawing up again, it shows the flats are being accessed. Not that one. Yeah, they go up the side, don't they? There. By the bin location, so, so they, if, if, if you were having your groceries delivered by any chance, you would pull round there and they would deliver it up the side, so there would not be a parking problem. You wouldn't park in the lane to walk all the way around to go to the flats, is what I'm saying. I was going to say other things, but it's already been said now, so I won't go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
I'm really sorry about this, but I do retain strong issues regarding the parking and actually, where is the delivery van going to stop to make these deliveries? Because it cannot, you cannot park a van or a delivery lorry to the right of the property. I accept that the access to those properties is along the sidewalk on the, on the right, but the vans, as, delivery lorries, cars, are still going to have to park between the building and that roundabout there. And that then creates huge issues for the people trying to get in and out at the Cranley Arts Centre car park. It effectively stops them from getting in and out. And with regard to the car parking facility at the end of Church Lane, that is owned and available to members of the church. It's owned by St Nicholas Church and is used by people visiting the church or visiting the church rooms. There are two church rooms to the right at the end and although probably the church does not enforce it by wheel clamps or anything like that, I do believe that they're perfectly entitled to stop anybody who is not visiting the church or the church rooms from using that small car parking facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Officers, would you like to comment?
Thank you, chairman. I think the only comment I make is, I, I think for a small sort of drop-down type of delivery vehicles, there would be room for it to stop in that position and vehicles to pass around it. That is my own view, I'm obviously not from a highway technical point of view, but from looking at the plan. And also, you've got to take account that if it's just maintained as an office space, you would have more deliveries potentially than a residential use. And again, if it was a residential use that's allowed under the prior approval, you would get that same impact. So I completely understand the point you're making, but my, my view is that there would be sufficient space for them to pull on to there and provide that delivery, but that's my view, so thank you, chairman.
Thank you. And also, if it was converted to a five-bedroom house, you'd have the same problems of delivery, et cetera. councillor Gray.
Thank you for letting me come back. The three questions, just to help my understanding of this. Is the facilities there for parking cycles? Is there a cycle store or any access to that which would considerably help the sustainability aspect of this? Second question is where will the bins be stored and, and collected? And the third point is the conditions referred to by county highways. I'm failing to see where that actually occurs. It says that conditions be imposed on any permission granted in relation to the access of the site and parking area.
Thank you, chairman. Can I turn members to page sixty-one? In terms of the access and the parking, condition five picks up on that requirement, so hopefully members will be happy with that wording, but if there's any comments around the wording of that condition. And condition eight picks up on the requirements, again, at the bottom of page sixty-one, details of any storage, buildings to be erected on-site, so that includes bin, cycle and cycle storage. And there's a suggestion from councillor Byam as well regarding motorcycle storage and we suggest we could include that in there as well because there clearly is space on-site to provide for that. So if members will be happy, we upgrade that condition to include bin, cycle and motorcycle storage. And, sorry, and the bin storage is, is shown on, on plan here. Obviously, what we're asking for is any, the details of the means of enclosure under the condition for that. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Any further comments? councillor Deaneus.
Sorry, it's on, it's on the same point. Going back to what councillor Gray said, the last couple of sentences say in relation to the access to the site and parking area, the condition is more about the visibility and into the site and it doesn't really talk about the parking area. I just wonder whether therefore that condition needs to be tightened. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica, did you wish to speak first or?
Thank you, chair. I just wanted to remind members about the prior approval that's been granted by the council. They don't need to provide parking as part of that development were they to implement it. So we need to bear that in mind in terms of an appeal if we were to refuse permission on the basis of lack of parking spaces on-site, because the inspector would take that into consideration, that they don't have to provide parking on the prior approval and that could be seen as being unreasonable to refuse on this basis for this application. Thanks, chair.
Thank you. Peter, you wish to comment?
Thank you, chairman. Thank you councillor Deaneus. Apologies, when I was drawing through conditions, I should have highlighted condition six as well, which says the development should not be occupied until the space, parking space has been, or space has been laid out within the site to provide the vehicle parking spaces. So hopefully, it's ready conjunction, it covers them, covers them both off. Thank you, chairman.
Can I propose the amendment the officers suggested to condition eight in case you want that formally done by adding the word motorcycle before the word cycle, I suppose? So it says bin, motorcycle and cycle storage.
Yes, thank you. Can I have a second for that, please? councillor Band, thank you. All those in favour of that amendment? With, with that amendment to condition eight, if we move to the recommendation, is that subject to consideration of any further representations by the twenty-first, no, that can't be right. Am I reading the right thing here? Oh, we've got the updated, yes. Apologies. Subject to conditions one to ten and the revised condition eight that we've Subject to conditions one to ten and the revised condition eight that we've just agreed, and informatives one to six as set out in the report, permission be granted. All those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
And those against?
A zero.
Those abstaining?
One.
Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed. Right, item ten, exclusion of press and public. Members, I now move the motion that pursuant to procedural